Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school committee meeting of May 23rd, 2016. A late addition to the first item of our agenda is to thank the ladies from our cafeteria department for providing us with some great strawberry smoothies here tonight. They're fantastic. Thank you. But first, on our actual agenda is acceptance of the meetings of -- meeting of May 9th, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Two motions.
All those in favor?
I abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the minutes of our executive session meeting of May 9th, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Phelps, second by Mr. Norris. All those in favor?
I'll abstain as well.
That's a vote. Communications. Mr. Retchless is not with us today. He is on a trip, as well as Mr. Mills's commitment with work. So, Mrs. Furlizzi.
Yes, okay. I have a few things. First of all, the boys locker room ventilation system that we have been working on for quite a while now. We have an air exchange system, which is a large system. It's working pretty well. It's on 24/7, and it's made a big difference. So, the real test will be football season. So far, so good.
Great.
Are we going to be able to paint it?
Well, yeah.
Very attractive.
It is very attractive. Hanging from the ceiling. It's big too, coming down.
Better unattractive than bad smelling, I suppose.
This is true.
Exactly right. State budget. You may have heard, the Senate has proposed an increase in Chapter 70 funds. For Rockland, that means an additional $391,000. If it passes the final state budget, that will come into the general fund of the town, which will probably go into free cash, and we can request monies from it next year in fiscal '17. FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, has reimbursed the town $400,000. Minimally, the schools spent money for the cleanup. That was the 2013-2014 blizzard. And, you know, we spent some money in overtime and plowing. The town paid most of the plowing and the roof clearing and so forth, so we may see some of that, but the town is also -- that'll go into general fund. Staffing. So far, we've had a high school biology teacher, middle school special ed teacher, and we're very close to hiring a middle school psychology psych at this time. Testing of the water for lead. I've applied for a grant with the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and we'll hear soon if we have some money for that to test the drinking water in Rockland, which is something that I think we should do.
Regardless, shouldn't we do it anyway?
I think we should do it, absolutely. Yes. If we get the grant, it'll fund the program. If it doesn't, we will do it.
Great.
And that is it for superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Furlizzi. Next on our agenda is the Rogers Middle School Scholar Leader Program, and I know we have with us tonight Jeremy Driscoll and Karen Dalton, and I see Beth come into the podium. Welcome, Beth.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to ask the two of them to come up for one second, and I'll just give you a very brief overview. Every year through the New England League of Middle Schools, we nominate two students that represent us as their scholar leaders at a dinner that is held in Marlborough. It was held last -- was it last Tuesday? It was held last Tuesday, 17th. The criteria would be just all around outstanding kids, and that's exactly what we have here today. We have the cream of the crop, in my opinion, from the eighth grade. Strong leaders, high grades, just people that you want to represent Rockland. That's what happened for us last week, so we're here to have them come up and meet everyone here. Mrs. Furlizzi?
I'll present your certificates. I'll read one. It's for Karen M. Dalton and Jeremy M. Driscoll, and it says, "Rockland Public Schools Certificate of Accomplishment." This certifies that these two candidates, these two winners, are awarded this certificate for selection in the New England League of Middle School Scholar Leader Program on this 23rd day of May, 2016, signed by John Retchless, Superintendent of Schools, and Daniel J. Biggum's, Chairman of the Rockland School Committee. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Okay. I guess I'm thrown up here. Just that I'm proud that I got picked, and I just can't believe it. And thank you to all my teachers who thought I was the best student to get chosen for this award.
Why'd you have to make it so short? Come on. Okay. I'd like to say thank you to the school committee for electing me for this award. Thank you to my lovely parents, who are making sure to raise me with respect and the ability to get the education that I deserve, and, um, bulldogs, I guess.
Great job.
Great job, both of you. Great job, Jeremy and Karen. Karen, I apologize for butchering your name as I introduced you, but great job. We're all proud of you, both of you, very much. Next on tonight's agenda is superintendent's report. Mrs. Furlizzi?
I think I already gave it.
Oh, you did. Sorry about that. I just went right back to it. All right, so we have monthly reports for the month of April. We have four items for approval. We have the school department, the high school student activities, the middle school student activities, and the cafeteria. I'll entertain four motions.
Four motions?
Second. Motion by Mr. Phelps, second by Mr. Norris. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question, though?
Please.
Mrs. Furlizzi?
Yes.
Can you take a look? I know it's not a lot, so I don't even bring up the amount.
Thirty-seven dollars.
Yeah.
If you look on the next page, I received a note from the high school secretary, Jane, and she has said that the deposit went in shortly after the expense.
I mean, we have an agreement-
We're keeping an eye on that. She knows anytime it goes negative-
Because we have an agreement that they will not spend what they don't have.
I definitely need explanations. Anytime it goes negative.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is monthly reports for March and April. We have 18 that we need to approve, starting with art.
Dan, are you going to go through them all? I just had a question on the music.
Go ahead, please.
Both the two reports, he talks about the piano. And if memory serves me correctly, on another committee that I once served on, that piano cost some $35,000.
Okay.
We've got to do everything we can to maintain that instrument, and if they need a dolly or something because moving it presently evidently is causing it to loosen up and rattle and all those bad things, I think we've got to pay attention to that because we don't want to go out and buy another $35,000 piano-
Absolutely not.
...and pay full price, whereas I think the state paid 60-something percent of the last one.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Thirty-six motions.
Thirty-six motions. Do I have 36 seconds?
Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Under old business, we have completed fundraisers. We have several here that were very successful, some really good ones, the Meat Raffle earning over $1,500, the LCR Tournament for the Athletic Boosters, over $2,600, and for the Toll Booth, the Sped Pack, over $2,500. That's fantastic. So, that's for your information. Next-
I have a question.
Please.
It doesn't seem to make sense on the girls' lacrosse team. She made no money?
It's on the fundraiser.
Or she made the $406. Is that just filled out wrong?
Maybe she didn't-
On the girls' lacrosse team?
Looks like it was-
I'm just guessing. Can you check?
406 if I remember.
Yeah, you're right. 406. But she -- so she didn't make any net because, yeah, well, yeah, expenses-
Or did she spend no expenses and make 406?
Yeah, because it appears as though they spent $406 and raised $406.
Yeah.
Can you just check? I mean, I assume that's what it is, but-
Month of money expended, $300. Month collected, last year, $500.
No, no, no. On the bottom.
Yeah, the bottom.
Oh, net zero. Money collected expenses.
It looks like they made no money.
I'll check that off for sure, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, under new business, we have the Esten School PAC and School Council reports and School Improvement Plan. And I know we have Marilyn and a whole group of ladies here with us tonight.
Marilyn Smith and Megan Byrne reported School Council and the School Improvement Plan.
Hi. Good evening.
Welcome.
I brought Megan Byrne with me today to go over the School Improvement Plan. Megan is a -- for those of you who don't know Megan, Megan's a teacher in our building, in our EPAS program. She's also a parent in our building, so she's a perfect member for the School Council. She's also just finished up her license to be an administrator, and she's leaving Rockland Public Schools this year, after this year, to go into Canton to be an administrator, so I thought this was perfect practice for her to start her professional administrative life. So, our School Improvement Plan is designed with the three elementary schools. We kind of worked together to do it. This year, we aligned it with the four standards of the evaluation process. The first two about curriculum and teaching and learning, which we have two initiatives in the district. Well, one's newer than -- one started last year, one's this year, and that's our Positive Behavior Intervention, our PBIS systems, and our multi-tiered systems of support. PBIS is more social-emotional kind of behavior, and the multi-tiered is the academic and intervening with kids with -- who need extra help. So, Megan's going to take us through our school goals.
Good evening. My first and final Rockland School Committee presentation. The first goal is around curriculum planning and assessment, and it's a two-part goal. So, the first is that all students will make one year's growth in reading, and the second part is one year's growth in math. And our plan is for teachers to really develop their modules in writing, reading, and math together, have common planning time, be able to continue to align our instruction to the common core, and analyze data and find the gaps each year, areas that we can really strengthen our Tier One, our core instruction for all students. Resources needed, just basically our district literacy coach, working with interventionists and teachers themselves, to work as a strong cohesive team for each grade level. The second goal is around differentiation of instruction in teaching all students, and that's really closely aligned with the MTSS initiative, which is coming, so that students will get, you know, solid Tier One instruction, and then we'll use the data meetings and analyze the results that the students are making throughout the year to move them into Tier Two for additional intervention, or Tier Three for specialized instruction. The goal for that is for, you know, our continued development of our leadership coaches in the building. They're going to be taking on an increasing role, much like we did with PBIS this year, in helping teachers in the building learn how to meet the needs and differentiate for all students. The third goal is around family and community engagement, and our goal is that faculty and staff at the Esten School will promote relationships and partnerships with the community that add value to our school. We've done a lot this year with our PAC. We're really happy for all the work that they've done with us, and we want to continue to develop those partnerships with them. We've done different things this year. We had a multicultural night where we surveyed all of the students in the building, and we had cultural representation for the entire school. That was wonderful. Parents brought food, artifacts. The students created tables to celebrate all the different cultures represented in our building, so we want to continue to build on that. We've brought in donuts for Dad, munchkins for Mom, so much so that we needed police detail. We had so much involvement. So, we want to continue to bring parents into school in different, unique, and creative ways. The more that we can have parents come in and partner with them, the better outcomes we'll have for all of our students. And the final goal is around professional culture, and our goal is to create and maintain a school environment that's ethical, culturally proficient, skilled, and collaborative, and to ensure student progress. That's really where we're looking, to continue to develop teacher leaders. The Rockland Schools have been wonderful to me in helping me sort of pursue my professional goals. I was the PBIS coach. Now, we have multi-tiered systems of support coaches, and we're also trying to continually develop teachers to be that, you know, guidance role for newer teachers coming in, be able to model lessons, and really be, you know, positive support for each other, and utilize the resources we have as teachers go to professional development, giving them opportunities to come back and bring that to the whole school.
Questions from the committee?
Very ambitious.
And well done. Great job. I'm sorry that we'll be losing you to another district, but you did a great job on your first and final presentation-
Thank you very much.
...for the Rockland School Committee. Thank you.
And part of the great group of people that we have, we have Mrs. Mini and Mrs. Dever, two of our parents and president and vice president of our PAC, and they've been -- since I've been here, they've been -- Maureen's been with me, and she has brought in so many parents, it's wonderful. They're a great group of people who donate their time and energy and resources to the Esten School, and they're going to tell you about what they've done.
Thank you, Marilyn. Megan is much more eloquent than I. She actually told you quite a few things that we've done for the school by bringing parents in, which we really have found such a great community at the Esten School. We have done some fundraising, and I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but we've done Name the Circle. We just did a Walk-a-thon on Friday. We've had someone's special dance, our Silent Auction and Basket Raffle, which is our biggest one of the year. We've done the donuts with Dad, the munchkins for Moms, and we're actually now, at the end of the school year, on the 17th, we're going over to the Brockton Rocks with the school and the community. And as I say, for us, fundraising, it's amazing to me how many people have come out, donated their time and their money. We have, right now, we're at about $26,000 that we fundraised at our school, of which about $6,000 of that is in scholastic dollars, which we use every year to buy periodicals for the children, weekly readers that they use, supplies, anything like that. So, as I say, I really can't say much more than thank you to Ms. Smith, because she is definitely one of our biggest supporters. She comes up with a lot of the ideas. We follow through with the legwork, but it's a great team, and we work together well. So, I don't know. I have the papers if anyone wants to see them, but I just, that's it.
They give a lot back to the kids, so-
And this is the quietest that I've ever seen, Mrs. Dever, so-
I don't know, but you just did great.
Yep. She does great for us, too. So, and she has very small children, so she will be with the Esten for the next.
She's going to take me to my retirement.
Ten years, I think, so, yes, yes. So, that's it.
Very impressive. $26,000. That is amazing.
Twenty-six thousand eight oh eight, but we're just saying twenty-six.
Give yourself the eight oh eight. Give yourself a credit or a credit, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fantastic job. That's awesome.
We will say, they also will have probably one of the greatest Memorial Day programs on Friday morning.
Yes, we will.
Absolutely. That's right.
This year, we reached out to some of our parents who are veterans as well, and I think we have maybe three of the military services represented in our immediate family. So, we're going to kind of put a little twist to record. We got lots of responses from grandmas and grandpas, but because of our facility is so small, we have to just limit it to, you know, our guests and just our parents that are involved and were involved with the military.
Well, someday, I'll get my wish, and we'll have it in the high school gymnasium and have all three schools.
That'd be fantastic.
Which I think is the -- has been a goal for a few years. Someday, hopefully, it'll happen, because I think it's fantastic.
And I want to thank Carol McGrath, our former principal, for paying for that. So, she -- that's her contribution to the school, that she continues that tradition.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your deals. Thank you.
Okay. Just need a vote to approve the Esten School Improvement Plan. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Norris.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Henderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a vote. Next on tonight's agenda is the Rogers Middle School School Improvement Plan. I think we have Ms. Bond coming again to the podium.
We think we made $26,001, just so-
Still amazing.
To be totally clear.
They made eight oh eight.
And if we haven't, we just did. Before I start this, I just want to quickly mention publicly, because I don't really often have a chance to do this, to make sure people are aware, we just finished up our park testing, all four grades, quite a bit of testing, a lot of sessions, a lot to do. The kids were fantastic. The teachers were wonderful. Everything was great. But I cannot emphasize enough how important and valuable Lisa Ryan, Tim Wells, and Chris Howe, as the technology people are to this, my school and to this town, because if it wasn't for them, it would not have happened. So, I just want to publicly thank them for all their hard work for the two and a half weeks that we did park testing.
How did the technology go? Did it go well?
It was amazing. We were testing, you know, 300 to 350 kids at a time.
Yeah.
So, they were moving carts and doing this, and they were there and available, and we had one little glitch, but-
We're fortunate we have everything that we need.
It was amazing. It was really, really amazing. So, I just wanted to mention that first. As Marilyn said, our goals are all focused around the standards from the evaluation, so let me just briefly touch on some of the things that we're hoping to do. We'd like to build on some of the things we started last year. We've worked with a lot of collaboration between teachers. We had an opportunity to add Spanish, as you know, and health and wellness, which was fantastic, and to increase our guidance staff. So, we want to continue to make sure that those people are fitting in as well as they are and get whatever they need to make those programs continue to work. Our first learning goal under curriculum planning and assessment is to design units of instruction which provide all students with optimum learning opportunities in all academic areas. And what we're talking about here is to make sure that the kids at all levels are getting what they need, and we've done some great pre-training in PBIS, which Marilyn already described. We've done some work for English language learners. We've done some great work for special education and assessment and data, and we want to make sure everybody has those skills and strategies. So, for example, ELL testing, you get great strategies on how to teach reading and vocabulary that can be used for everyone. So, we want to make sure that everyone has access and understanding to all of that kind of training. Continue to look at our curriculum maps for kids of all different ability levels, including our kids who are advanced or above grade level, to make sure that they get what they need. We started spiraling the curriculum in science in grade six last year. We're going to do seventh this year, and continue to add STEM initiatives, science, technology, and engineering. We're doing some great stuff in seventh grade right now with technology and engineering, so we want to continue to do that. Continue to revise the curriculum, as I said, with that initiative on STEM, and make sure that we're still using the keys to literacy, strategies such as summarizing and co-teaching, and everybody's using it so that there are no surprises. So, when kids go to all different classes, teachers are using two-column notes. Teachers are using the same language, and their teachers are using summarizing techniques. It's important so that everybody is on the same playing field. So, that's our first goal. Our second goal is to enhance student engagement, motivation, and student ownership of student work and work product and behavior. PBIS will now be used district building one, I'm sorry, as opposed to just our coaches. We have our team set, ready to go. We start that with the staff in August. Common language, again, about what we're doing as far as our assignments. Continue to co-teach at all grade levels so that special education teachers and regular teachers are working together to meet the needs of all students. Our honor roll ceremonies and other positive things that we do for the kids, Mrs. Shipper's Wall of Fame, all of that to keep kids on track and engaged, and we know that it's working because our attendance this year has really been unbelievable. Some days, 98%, 99% of the kids are there. So, we know that they're engaged, and we know that they're motivated. Continue to train our staff for social-emotional student needs, because we know this is a big issue for the district and for our building. And we're going to be focusing, especially in ELA, reading and English, on our above-grade level kids and designing curriculum for them, different novels perhaps, or different expectations as far as reading, so that they have an opportunity to really push forward and grow. That's a huge focus for us for this year. And again, through all our different classes, to build opportunities for student collaboration. That would be our second goal. The third goal is continuing to work to build relationships with families and community. We have a couple ideas this year as far as X2 and working with that. Our PAC has been an amazing resource for kids and different activities. Continue to build those relationships with the PAC and the family. Adding after-school activities or clubs for kids, we're looking to a couple ideas for next year. Again, our focus on our ELL students and families and support of the arts programs, our arts programs, such as the music and art, because the arts festivals and the concerts are really coming along and really, really doing a great job. We want to continue to build on that. And our final goal has to do with making sure that our teachers and our paraprofessionals and our staff have what they need to give kids the best learning opportunity possible, and that's good professional development, teacher-led or staff-led professional development. The best way to learn is to teach it, and using our faculty meetings and department meetings, not just to give announcements and talk about, here's what we're doing next, but to work together, collaborating. So, those are just a few of our goals.
Questions from the committee?
Oh, I have none. I think it's, again, well-placed out. Hopefully, some challenging goals with some things that we can meet.
I think it's exciting. Good things have been happening, and I think we hope that they continue to happen.
Absolutely.
Christine Lewis is here to talk.
She's so happy to follow after Esten.
Thank you, Ms. Bond.
I'd like to know if some of the Esten parents are coming up next year, because that would be very helpful. We did not do quite as well as Esten did, but I think we had a better year than we did even last year. I passed along the sheets that actually have the breakdowns on what we did. We have an apparel fundraiser that just ended on Friday that I do not have a number back for yet. We were able to help again with the agenda books, give a nice check to the Philly trip, give buses for the field trips, a nice teacher appreciation week that I think lasted more than the week, or at least, at least for breakfast, it did. We're doing an ice cream social in June, and that will be all the students, the teachers can join, a DJ. It'll be a lot of fun. And we had a great laser anti-bullying show for the kids. They had a ball. I went to it. I had a ball. I'd love to be able to do something along that line again next year for the whole group. And we're also donating a lovely hole for the Rockland Golf Tournament, and that's it. And I'd like to thank the principal and the vice principal for all their help. And again, hopefully, we can make an Esten number next year. That would be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Any questions?
Just a comment. Thank you to all of our PACs. You know, we're really lucky to have our kids, all of at all our levels, to have such active PACs, whether they raise $26,000 or not. You know, it's just incredible that you all give of your free time and really make the culture of Rockland Schools a better place to be. Any other comments?
If it's like any other organization, too, the work of a very few, accomplish an awful lot, and that's appreciated regardless of the amounts raised. Our kids would -- they'd have so much less had you folks not put in the hard work that you do to provide this for them. It's every year, I say that, but it amazes me, the amount of money, and compliments to the community as well for supporting you.
How did, just one, not for you, Christine. Beth, how did the Philly trip fundraising go this year?
Okay. Not as good as in the past, but okay.
You're still smiling, so.
Yeah. You're still, you know, consistent.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Rogers Middle School School Improvement Plan.
Ooh.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelps, second by Mr. Norris. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda is a request for approval of the 2016-17 Elementary Handbook, with which there are several changes. Any that you'd like to highlight, Mrs. Furlizi?
I don't. They're all listed there. It goes by page. I don't have anything that is anything that I need to highlight right now.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table from Mr. Norris and a second from Mr. Phelps. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote. Next on tonight's agenda is a request for approval for the Special Education Summer School. This is for Lizzie. Highlights on that, comments on that?
Just that. We have everything listed here. We need seven teachers, 10 paraprofessionals, two reading and math tutors, three van drivers, one nurse, and one coordinator. And the cost is listed here of $45,451. And it begins on July 5th and goes through August 4th. And Lynda Miniglia is here if we have any questions on any particulars, our special ed director.
It was pretty similar to last year's cost.
It is.
It was almost identical.
Very close. Similar program to last year, Lynda?
Very similar. Again, it will be housed at the middle school, thanks to Beth Vaughn. We had a fail last year. It was very successful. Facilitator last year was Megan Byrne. And this year, Sharon McGonigal is our summer school facilitator. The only difference between this year's programming and last year's is we have one more elementary class. Other than that, everything is pretty much the same. We will be sharing a nurse with the North River Collaborative. And we staggered the classes. I think three programs go from 11:30, from 7:30 to 11:30 in the morning because of the van drivers to make sure that we have coverage for all of our students. And then three classes start at 8:30 and get over at 12:30. Three of our classes are four-day-a-week programs and the other four are three-day-a-week. So, the four days is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is the three-day program. We also have some of our students that will attend just tutorial sessions that need a little bit of reinforcement, you know, either in the ELA or the math or both areas. So, pretty much that is the program. And, you know, like I say, I look forward to it. We had a great staff of our teachers last year that worked with our students. It was great because they already have a baseline with many of our students. And it was great having all of our programs in one location. They did a lot of collaborating, and I think it was great overall. So, that's our plan again this year.
Great. Any questions or concerns for Mrs. Miniglia from the committee?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you, Mrs. Miniglia.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is the Special Education PAC Report.
We have with us this evening Alicia Patterson, our C-PAC chair. And she's new this year, and she's also one of our special ed van drivers. Happy to have her. Hi, Alicia.
Hello. We had a great year. It was my first year taking over for the PAC. We had a lot of people come in, speakers come in for parents, as you see in front of you. We had our basic rights and we had people come in. Megan Burns did what, how to read an IEP, which is very helpful to a parent with a new kid coming in with special needs, not knowing what to do or how to read your IEP. Our fundraiser this year was our toll booth, and we did very well with that. With that, we were able to give out scholars, three scholarships, so that they could put it toward their college and whatnot. So, we had a great year. Any questions for me? Do you need anything?
Question for Mrs. Patterson.
I just think this is absolutely, you guys do just a fantastic job. I know this is your first year.
This is my first year.
I will tell you when I started on the school committee.
I have a special needs child.
This was a disaster.
And I work for the town as well.
Yeah, we had a lot of problems, I remember, when I first started on the school committee. And it was like a lot of, these reports were not like this, the things that were going on with the PAC.
Thank you.
I mean, this is just, it really is. It's a credit to all the work that you did in the first year, and I hope it continues. So, thank you.
I hope so, too.
Great job. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to a couple more years.
Another year.
Great.
Yep.
Another year. Fantastic. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve the Special Education PAC Report?
Vote.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelps, second by Mr. Norris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a vote. Next on tonight's agenda is our Chartwell's Annual Update.
Yes, we have a great relationship with Chartwell's, our food service vendor. And I'd like to introduce Erin Long, our district manager, and Adele Leonard, our food service director, for an annual update and an explanation of our increased request in prices.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Adele's taking a little bit of a backseat. Maybe next year, Kayden will come up and he'll do a little speaking, too. So, I'll give you an overview of the program and how it performed this year. And then I will pass out some information. Ms. Furlizi asked me to distribute some information tonight on the background for the meal pricing formula that is required by USDA. So, as far as the overview of the program this year, very strong, solid year from a program perspective as well as financials. Breakfast is up 24%, and that's primarily driven by the continuation of the breakfast-in-the-classroom programs in the elementary schools, as well as Adele started a cart at the high school, a breakfast cart. And the smoothies are one of the items that is really, really popular with the kids. So, the counts daily went from about 50 last year to 100 kids having breakfast at the high school this year. So, that's one of the reasons is, and that's why she wanted to bring it this evening. Lunch meals are up overall 4% over prior year. And she attributes that mainly to a meal pattern change that she made where she had things more regularly scheduled so the kids could, they would know that on certain days, certain things were going to be offered. So, older kids are just as habitually driven as sometimes the younger kids are. So, they've made some positive comments about that this year, so that's helped with meal participation. And there are more students eligible for free meals this year as well. So, overall, sales between combination of breakfast and lunch and then à la carte sales is up 7, 7.5% over prior year. And another noteworthy item to mention is grants. Chartwell's developed this year a grant website, which is sort of a one-stop shop for our food service directors to go to as a resource to look at grants that are available in this area and across the country to help utilize that money in school districts. And Adele has worked with some folks in the district, and they were able to apply for and receive about $10,000 worth of grants total, about $1,500 from Project Bread for the summer program expansion, $1,000 from Fuel Up to Play 60 to do taste testings with a PE teacher at the high school and also with the eighth-grade students. And then a $7,000 grant earlier in the school year for Jefferson Elementary for some equipment for the, from the Department of Ed. And I think she's applied for five more with New England Dairy, correct? Like for breakfast and... So, five more grants are kind of in the works right now. So, we hope to get, be successful with that. And she's really busy with catering at this time of year especially. So, if I can take a moment to just distribute some of this information regarding pricing.
You want me to take that, Erin?
Would you mind? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, I'll let you just digest the first page a little bit, and then I'll explain this. So, the National School Lunch Program, which Rockland is a participant of, is governed and has to abide by the rules that are set by the USDA. So, when the USDA changes the meal pattern based on dietary guidelines for Americans and pricing and all those other rules and regulations that we have to abide by so that we can receive federal funding, when they have rules in place, we have to sort of follow those rules in order to maintain the funding levels. And regarding lunch prices, and this developed, this rule came out five years ago when the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act came out. What they say basically is, school district A, for every free lunch we provide to students, the reimbursement that we will provide currently is $3.13. So, for every free lunch, they've determined the cost for the, providing that lunch is $3.13. They also give funding for reduced and paid lunches, and the paid reimbursement rate is 35 cents. So, the rationale is such that if they determine that the value of a lunch is $3.13 overall and they are contributing 35 cents towards a paid lunch, then the idea is that they would like the school districts to be at an average price point of the difference between the free and the paid rate. And in that case, for coming up, this is $2.78. So, $2.78 is the average price point. And what that means is if you have multiple price points in the district, like one price level at elementary school and another at high school and middle school, it's a weighted-average formula. So, every year, we have to plug in our paid lunch counts for the month of October and then determine where the weighted average falls based on the weight of how many are each, at each price point. So, right now, Rockland is calculating at $2.72 based on the weighted average of the current pricing, which is $2.55 for elementary and $2.80. So, with that being said, we have to get the weighted price point to be from $2.72 up to $2.78, on average, a 6-cent increase. So, that's where that explanation comes from. On the next page, what we've done is put together a little bit of history of pricing, where Rockland has been, and also we made some phone calls to some local school districts just to check in with them. Everyone, not only in Massachusetts but across the country, has to go by this pricing formula. And the state, when the state comes in to do audits, this is one question that they ask of the business managers and the food service directors, are we doing this annually? Are we looking at pricing? So, I know, for instance, that Waymouth, I questioned why they weren't going to have a price increase, and I called Waymouth Schools today, and they're actually in the middle of an audit, and the audit is being conducted. And the auditor was recommending today that they, they go up a quarter next year. So, some things are sort of like in motion. So, their pricing next year will probably be closer, you know, a little bit, 10 to 25 cent of an increase, according to the state auditor that was there. So, that being said, what Adele and I did was we used the formula worksheet and played around with different pricing scenarios that would get Rockland to that average price point of $2.78. And the options that you see here, option one, two, three, and four, would all succeed in doing that. The first two options are, you know, a nickel at one level, a dime at the other, and then vice versa. The third option is just keeping it equal and having all grade levels go up a dime. And then the fourth option would be if you wanted to consider increasing it a little bit more to get to the nearest quarter, and then there may be a good likelihood that next year, we would not have to come back and get a nickel or a dime. We can go up a little bit each year, nickel and a dime, but we may always be chasing, you know, that pricing. Or if you can, if the, if the community can tolerate a little bit of a stronger increase in one year, then next year, there may not be a need for an increase. So, there's just some options for you to consider. Anything else?
Questions for Mrs. Long?
I guess I have one question. Do we consider just raising the elementary and making them both $2.80? As I see, Abington charges the same, Whitman charges the same.
I think we try to differentiate the offerings and the portion sizes at the secondary schools.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a better value, especially for the students and the families, too, because the elementary portions tend to be smaller and they don't have as much variety. So, I think just from an equitable standpoint, it's, I don't know about the menu offerings at the other school districts, you know, and if that's a consideration or not. But that's one reason we recommend having a little bit of a difference.
I'm inclined to say a little bit at a time, because once you do the strong increase, once you can never predict that there won't be anything the next year. So, I think a little increment at a time is easier to handle than one fell swoop that you can't guarantee won't be increased. But that's just me.
Thoughts on the options?
I don't mind chasing it. I don't see, I don't see any need to jump ahead and hope you don't have to increase it. I like to see you every year. So...
I think I said that. You're going to see us every year.
He likes the smoothie.
Now, he can tell me what was in it. I don't know. Sounded awful, tasted awful healthy.
Strawberries and yogurt, and the kids love them, so.
It is great.
So, I guess my question, Colleen, does the superintendent have a recommendation?
We discussed this, and we thought maybe 10 cents per meal, so that it's not the lowest, but it's not also, you know, 20 cents. It's sort of in the middle, maybe it'll carry for another year.
Equally across the board. I like that idea.
I could go with that. I make, I'll make a recommendation that we choose option three, 10-cent increase at the elementary, middle school, and high school level.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Any questions?
And I just want to say, because you're standing here and she's here, she does a fantastic job.
I appreciate that.
We are really blessed and happy to have her with us.
I am, too.
It didn't start out well. I was a proponent. Nobody else sat here when we changed over to Chartwell's. I was a proponent that we got rid of our own and brought in Chartwell's. And we had some bumpy roads to start with. We've brought her in, and other than her calling me when I owe a dollar and a half, she's...
That's good for you. Shake him down.
It's all for the program.
No, no, I know, I know. She does a fantastic job.
I appreciate that.
And the best part is, the kids really like her.
Yes. I, you know, she, I think you may be aware that Adele was twice nominated and selected to be a star. We have a program, like an employee recognition program, and I think two years ago, she was the national winner and went to Florida. And the primary, the real primary reason for that is she does a good job. Her numbers are tight. Everything is in good working order. But I see it, I see it more when I come here than, I oversee 12 districts. I don't have any food service director that knows as many kids and people personally on a name basis as Adele. And I, and I, they're all, they all are networking with their community members, and they all know administrators. But she, I'm walking through the cafeteria, and she's talking to all the kids, and she's like, and that one, she just got an A on her test last week. It's fantastic. I don't know how she does it.
She should win every year.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I am so happy and pleased with the success of and the utilization of the breakfast-in-the-classroom. It's so great for these kids to be able to have an opportunity to jumpstart their day and have a healthy meal to start off with. You know, many of them don't have that opportunity in the morning, and I think that's just a fantastic thing for our kids.
Yes. And I have to say, a lot of thanks has to go to the staff and the teachers and the faculty at those schools, because it is quite a thing that they have to kind of coordinate and work with us. And I've, I've done a lot of rollouts of breakfast-in-the-classroom programs. One of the districts I work with is Brockton, and it's been a three-year process. And Adele did it, I think, in the last couple of years. But it is, it does take a lot of community work to get those programs going, because it's a change in the classroom, and I, and we understand that. But I think it's beneficial to the kids, and hopefully, they go to the nurse's office less frequently for hunger and things like that.
I have to say also that Adele goes down to the elementary schools, and she has them taste-test her own vegetables from her garden, and she makes healthy sweets, brownies and so forth. She has all kinds of things happening in the elementary schools that the kids enjoy.
So, should we expect brownies in the future?
Black bean brownies.
Black bean brownies.
She had me taste it before she told me what it was.
That's interesting. Very interesting.
That's nice.
Can I say one more thing to the parents? We notify parents when their balances go negative, even if it's a very small amount. It's just across the board, please don't get insulted. We just do it when someone goes negative, and it's better then, and then two weeks later, except, you know, two weeks later, we'd be a lot more in the red if they, we didn't notify them immediately, so.
As a parent who gets that call, not often, but once, yeah. And, you know, sometimes for us, it's just 60 cents or something.
Exactly.
But, you know, it's great to know it. I mean, and it's great to be, you know, to know we need to do that. And I think it's great that Adele's taken that initiative to make those phone calls.
Thank you.
So, I agree. Thank you.
It's not an insult on anyone. It's just a notification.
Nope. Not taken that way, at least from us.
Got to do it.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mrs. Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Long, sorry.
Thanks, Adele.
Okay, next on tonight's agenda, request for approval of fundraisers, and we have six this evening. National Honor Society Trivia Night, Class of 2018 Gift Card Sales, Class of 2018 Yankee Candle Sales, Girls Soccer Car Wash, Girls Soccer Candy Sale, and Girls Soccer Donation Letter. Questions or comments from the committee on any of these fundraisers?
My only question is, does soccer team know whether they're going to have the car wash?
I haven't heard. I can find out.
I guess Walgreens has cut them off.
Oh, interesting.
Yes.
Corporate has said that they can't do car washes anymore.
That's too bad. Okay.
Well, maybe, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but there's one other place in town that does them, so maybe they'll...
There is indeed, and we will look into that place.
Exactly.
All right. So, I'll entertain six motions.
Six motions.
Second.
Second. First, motions by Mrs. Henderson, second by Mr. Norris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a vote. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, we have an MOU, a change in our lacrosse coaches' stipends, which we've discussed a bit already, but it's going to require a vote of our committee. Questions or comments from the committee regarding this, or anything you wanted to highlight, Mrs. Furlizi?
Just that you have signed the memorandum of agreement, but it has not been voted on, and the lacrosse is now considered a varsity sport, or it is a varsity sport, so or it is a varsity sport, so we need the stipends need to be in line with the rest of our, our varsity sports.
So, the only thing this memorandum of agreement is covering is the vas, is lacrosse, correct?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Norris, second by Mr. Phelps. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a vote. Next on tonight's agenda, we have a request for approval of our Prentice Hall Health Textbooks and this is a first reading, Mrs. Forlisi.
First reading. We have three different health, um, textbooks to be viewed. Um, and I also have here is Brenda Folsom, our, um, Phys Ed Director, and Sue Phelps, our Health, um, teacher. And they have requested that we, um, purchase these as soon as possible and they are here for viewing. If you have any questions, Sue and Brenda are here.
Can I grab them?
Are we gonna be able to buy them?
Not, it's not in the budget right now. Um, maybe.
Thank you. Those are the same. It's like this.
There was one recommended.
Sorry, I like books. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Hi, ladies, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the one that's recommended, one of them, um...
The, the Prentice Hall...
This one?
That one there is the recommended one there.
Which one?
That's the current, that's the one recommended. Mr. Norris has the one we're currently using, which is 2004.
And what do you like about this book? Tell me what impresses you.
It really focuses on the globalization aspect and critical thinking, coping skills that are facing the young youth in America today and the world. Give them the opportunity to work with their anger, emotional health, actually putting names to it. And it has an online access as well so that if they're not comfortable coming to a staff member, they can access and hopefully use their critical thinking to help themselves.
One thing I will say about this, that, just looking at index, it does highlight both mental and physical health and those combined, in my opinion, are very important because you usually don't have one without the other.
Exactly.
The other interesting aspect is that it highlights some of the things around the national health agendas, like Healthy People 2020, some of the major topics, which is really nice to see because that means it's evidence-based and relevant.
Yeah, working with the 2004, it's, it's just dated material. A lot has changed since 2004.
A lot, especially in the last four years.
So, it really is time to update. And when we did the, um, the different quotes, Prentice Hall was, gave us a lot more for a lower cost. Um, they give us a six-year digital license. Good Heart gave us the same thing, but it was almost double the amount, um, of the quote. If you, it's right on the sheet.
So, is the digital license exactly what's in the book, other than some other...
I think there's more on sites that you can go on to.
The links that are listed will give you access to that.
I guess, because my question is gonna be at some point, I mean, I understand, but we, a kid carries home five of these, this weighs a ton.
This is only a classroom set.
That's just classroom set. That's why we're only asking for 30.
My question is, when we look at these digital things, that they have access to what's in here online, so that they want to go back and, and look at it at some point?
Yeah, the, um, the textbooks that we're asking for is only 30 student textbooks, being that it's staying in the school. And then the online portion, they will be able to, um, get when they're at home using the sites that were offered.
So, do we have the option of, I, I guess, so that would be my question, I'm looking at their quote, do we have the option of buying more digital licenses? That they could use them out, or is it one for every book you buy?
That's a good, I don't know.
The package is one for every book.
Okay. I should know, but I don't. Will this help taught, what, with grade level?
Um, currently I have been teaching ninth grade and we implemented a senior course, which is a 90-day course. So, I run two of those. While rolling out the SOS program, we did realize that we're missing quite a few freshmen this year.
Really?
So, we're, um, trying to get them together to roll out the final testing for the SOS program. And I don't think it was realized that we did not give them freshman health.
Yeah, so it'll be offered to the sophomores also, yeah.
Incoming freshmen, we're gonna hit them all this year?
Because it's a big group incoming, it's about 210, I believe.
What's the problem? Why can't we hit them all? Was it scheduling or...
I'm not sure.
It didn't fit into their schedule.
Okay.
And, um...
To me, these days, it's, it's huge.
Oh, I...
It's huge. I mean, we've got to, got to touch these kids at least once with, with, with this information.
We have picked up a few sophomores this year that did not have the opportunity last year.
Yeah.
But they kind of feel out of place, being in a freshman class.
Sure. Yeah. But we run a lot of classes. I mean, we run a lot of classes that, from freshmen to seniors, I mean, so.
We do.
Right.
I mean, we don't want to miss any of them. I guess if Mr.... The earlier the better. Right. The earlier the better, I think.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? I see our resident expert healthcare, healthcare committee.
That's wonderful.
Sorry?
Well, motion to table.
Motion to table, Mr. Phelps?
Second.
Second by Mr. Norris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When Mr., uh, when Mr. Retschler comes back, I know I will make a phone call to figure out how we're gonna pay for these because it's, I mean, it's vital to these kids.
I appreciate it.
It's important. I mean, if we gotta dive in somewhere else, it's definitely vital to get this done. Say hello to Mr. O'Gara for me. You and I go back along, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next on tonight's agenda, personnel information for April and May. Anything of note, Mrs. Forlisi?
Yes, first of all, we had mentioned Megan Byrne, teacher, who was, um, leaving us... What's that? Oh, okay.
Speaking of leaving.
You're popular. Moving on to a different district, thank you for all your work with Rockland. Much appreciated. And the other highlight is Glenninos. He has been a teacher with the, um, with the Rockland School District for 35 years. He's currently a middle school art teacher. I believe he started his career in Rockland as an art teacher. He's worked in the elementary schools. I'm sure he's done other things that I don't know about, but, um, he's been here 35 years. He will be missed and just wish him well.
Thank you very much. Last on tonight's agenda, public service announcements. Mrs. Henderson?
Um, just that I noticed it's getting nicer out. There's a lot more kids in the street and a lot more motorcycles. So, if everyone would just be a little extra careful driving and start looking more towards the periphery and the sidewalks and people out and about.
Mr. Phelps?
Oh, just, uh, we've had great proms. Uh, kids were great. Mark, I'm sure will tell us more. And I usually don't do this, but I get on a soapbox and talk about this field project. It's sorely needed. Please, uh, we can't have track meets. I'm not speaking for the schools now, I'm speaking for myself as an individual, but we need this for the town. The fields are overused, they're, and some of them are deplorable condition. This would take the pressures off. Uh, to me, it's the frosting on the cake. We have a great, uh, campus here of middle school, high school, a tremendous stadium, which was built for baseball and baseball only. Play football up there, it chews it up and it creates an awful lot of work for the park department.